Welcome to the June 4 meeting of the Concord Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded and is being held remotely, so I will begin with a roll call vote, starting with Linda Miller.
Here.
Mark Giddings.
Here.
Pat Nelson.
Here.
Rob Almeida. He's muted, but his mouth moved and I am. And Andrew Boardman is here as well. So with that, we will start with administrative business of public comment, which is these are items which are not connected to any. Agenda item and is limited to up to fifteen minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to anyone's speakers. So if there are any public comments associated with things that are not on the agenda, we'll open up the floor now. And there being no public comment, we will move on to the next item, which is the Planning Board Agenda for 2024, 2025. So at the. May 21st meeting, we finalized finalized the agenda, but a couple of things got added in, so we will bring those up now, if that makes sense. Oh, and I see that Sue Felsham is joining, so I'm just gonna flag that for the minutes. I don't know if she's in yet, but.
I am.
I know it can take a minute to get on, that's what happened to me.
Well, I think she can at least hear us. So I did get a couple of comments back and sent everybody just a slightly revised letter. There was a couple of spelling errors and. The wrong tense for the use of criteria, it should be criterion. But the one item that I did want to. Add. And I believe it was. Oh, now you see now I don't even remember what I added. It all just runs together.
It was the frontage.
That's right.
Yeah. For ADUs.
No.
Which are either accessory or additional.
That was there before.
I had flagged one that doesn't appear to be here yet, but.
Oh, all right, you know what? My apologies, let me. I'll tell you which one I added, hang on. Was number six, oh, the Building Commissioner under. Now I have the number.
Right.
So, under.
A U D U's.
A D U's.
A D U's.
Sure. The Building Commissioner currently under 4222M. It only says that a ADU cannot be used as. A bed and breakfast. But that section that it references 5.3.15, it says bed and breakfast. And tourist home. I. I think, Andrew, I saw your email that it should be. And I'll, I'll ask Sue, but whether it should be a bed and breakfast or tourist home or. Yeah, I think, I think, Andrew, your comment was it should be an or.
Right, because isn't it designed to prohibit both?
Yes.
Not when it's a combined bed and breakfast and tourist home?
And so that was, I just, I had forgotten his request to, just to add that for clarification. That's it, that's all I had.
Okay, and then there was one, oh, I was gonna turn the floor over to Linda with her. Item that she had mentioned by email, unless it's related to this, or.
Well, it's, it's. It's a comment, but it's not related to that item, because I got feedback from both you and Elizabeth, and I'm good with that, but. I just wanted to bring up, I think there was a discussion about this peripherally at the Select Board last evening and. May, I wasn't able to listen to the entire. Meeting, so maybe Wendy also couldn't weigh in, but there was a. Discussion about moving forward with. Our goals and objectives. And then that broadened out at the Select Board to a discussion of coordination across. The town in terms of town priorities and how committee priorities. Match or fit in with town priorities, and it was acknowledged that, you know, a lot of our priorities come from Invision Concord 2030. But. I, there was the sense that there should be. And I guess, I think this particularly related to the parking. Project, but again, it broadened out to. We need to be thinking about coordinating with other committees and with the town goals, so. I just wanted to bring that up as a point of discussion and reference and. Maybe as we discuss these goals and also discuss the planning, the parking. Discussion in terms of the contract. Need to be thinking about which of our goals do we need to. Coordinate, because that takes a lot of resources to coordinate with. You know, we saw that with the scenic roads. Rules and regs, that working with Historical Commission and with. Public Works is not. Easy, so if we have to coordinate with TAC, coordinate with Economic Vitality. It might be worthwhile to. Consider that more heavily as in terms of the resources that will be. Required and also. Are there. Broader goals that the town has that. Fit in with this, and, and I think Carrie was very. Forthcoming about wanting to do this too, as well as Mary on the Select Board, so it is just something I picked up on and. I certainly would love if Wendy. Could articulate that better than I can.
I'm happy to, Linda, can you hear me? Okay, I wasn't sure how these rules work in here, so yes, at the Select Board, we sort of just started to raise that larger question across. Goals in general, and how are we as a town taking all our goals and prioritizing them and then aligning them? Because every committee has their own goals, and I'll give you, as a Planning Board credit, you are sort of, I think, working on the right things. I think Mary's comment around parking and also, I think. Relates to economic vitality and some concerns that have been raised over time, so I, I think your focus on parking is good, I don't think that's a concern. Also, the other issue around the industrial zoning was a concern that was raised by business, so. You know, I think you're focused on the right thing, I don't think we have the answer to what the town goals are. And I guess for the Planning Board, the challenges, the other comment was, there's a lot of goals, can you achieve all that? So that's, you know, for you all to sort of work a little on, but you wouldn't take it on if you didn't think you could. Make progress on it, so I'll leave it at that and would certainly bring back additional goals as they come to fruition, but. The Select Board hasn't established their goals either. So. But a good point, it's, it's good to think about aligning all these goals. Hope that helps.
Elizabeth, you have your turn up?
To Wendy's point about there being a lot of goals. There, there are, and the Planning Board used to try and put timing to them. And it just became, from a staff perspective, unmanageable, because there's, you know. Something may, you know, bubble up and, and other things may have to be put on back burners and. You know, there's quite a few things on this list that have been on this list probably for three years, and so. If they, they stay on the list, then the conversation can happen about, all right. This, this isn't advancing how we're doing it, we, but we do need to advance it, so let's figure out, and that's, you know, we were successful in getting. You know, you know, funding to get a consultant to help with something or. The subdivision rules and regs update, the funding for that was allocated as a capital request. I think three years ago. So it, it's, it is a lot, but I'm. I'm hopeful in the next few months, we'll have two new planners on board and. Things are just gonna, you know, crank out and be, be amazing. That's my, that's my plan.
Shouldn't we get direction on town goals from the Select Board? I mean, if. You know.
Isn't the Invision Concord our general. Roadmap to goals absent anything, I mean, isn't that kind of what we're using?
Right, but if they have other goals that we should be aligned with, then. Somebody needs to. Lay them up for it.
So, yeah, if we're going in the wrong direction.
Well, you know what, I think you're all saying the right thing, I just, the Select Board hasn't set their goals. And the town manager's goals aren't set, so I think we're all talking the same thing, but I do know is that parking has been identified as a priority. By the, you know, from the, from the business community, Select Boards in support of that. So I guess my comment there is, I think you're on the right track with those things, but more to follow, I think.
Yeah, Elizabeth.
So I do kind of want to. To, just for, for Wendy's information, you know, the, the Planning Board's purview start, you know, is kind of just. Centered around the zoning bylaw when it comes to parking, so. Think, I think. Some of the issues and concerns that are bubbling up from other ways and other committees and businesses to the Select Board. Is the much larger public parking. And, you know, the last time the study was done was 2013, so.
It's zoning I was talking about, that I keep hearing repeatedly, is sort of. Getting more relief and you have constant consistent requests for relief, right? So I think that's, that's what I've heard from a business perspective, but.
Pat?
Yeah, thank you, Andrew, I have a question. So when all the committees make their goals? Is it expected that they're referencing the Invision Concord? Plan to, to define their goals and. And I know, and then who drives that? That adhere. That kind of check, it's a big document. I, I got to page nine this evening before the meeting started. And it's a good, so far, it's a really good document, but do, do the committees? Have an expectation of aligning their goals with the Invision Concord? I don't know who can answer that question.
I, I can tell you that from the Planning Board's perspective, I think they're. One of the few committees that annually goes through the action items and you have your action item spreadsheet. And, you know, work from those, you know, goals and action items from the plan, I, I think it was. Last year or the year before, the Select Board had asked all boards and committees go through and do that exercise. I, I don't think other boards, I'm, I'm not aware of any other board and committee that does it every year.
It's only my perspective, but I would say that while it's our responsibility to look at Invision Concord. And consider which goals have been set out for us in it, that doesn't mean we have to slavishly. Do everything in the plan, even if it's outdated, and contrariwise, that we can't do anything unless it's in the plan, but it's a great guide.
Right, and ultimately, it's town meeting which decides whether we, we're hitting the mark or not. So, you know, we. Yeah. So that's, that's the ultimate arbiter, I guess, is. At the end of the day. But. Yeah.
And if we submit our goals memo, that doesn't mean we're constrained to only do that, if the Select Board, for example, feels that we have left off something important. Or that we really shouldn't work on something that's on it, we can submit our goals to them and they can advise us back about. What changes they would like to see, which we would then take under consideration.
So it's a fluid process to answer your question.
Thank you.
So I guess with that. Were there any other notes or people wanted to make with regard to the goals? Or can we accept this as the final final? I see I have a public comment before I, I guess, put it to the rest, so. Absent a committee comment, I didn't see any hands, Carol Svoi.
Yeah, hi, Carol Savoy, 61 Belknap Street. I wanted to make a couple of comments, one about the Invision Plan. That was written in 2018, Invision 2030, we're now in 2024, so that was six years ago. I don't know how often they updated, but you know, a lot has happened since then. You know, particularly with what's coming up. Most recently, I had sent over a letter, I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but. The 2229 Main Street, that's coming, you know, a little faster than people anticipated, there's actually a meeting right now. I guess a public hearing or forum on that topic. And Mary Hartman from the Select Board, I quoted some of the things that she said in the Concord Bridge. About that they'll be making a final report in Halloween. This year, and after that, she expects that to move pretty quickly about what we, we, being Concord, decide to do about it. But that's, you know, forty-six acres that could potentially have housing or, or other things on it. And, you know, the MCI, you know, prison property, that's sixty-two acres that. You know, is moving a little quicker than I think people expected as well, and we just, you know, voted for eighty-two acres. For the MBTA, so that's a hundred and ninety-two acres, that's not counting that other Throw 40B. Development that's also under consideration, so I think that's a lot of acreage that Concord is considering for housing. And with that, I just think that we need to kind of have a plan, right? And you guys are involved in zoning and zoning is a part of that, and I know you want to wait until. It gets farther down the line, but I think you need to be more proactive about it. And get out ahead of it and start thinking about it, because as you know, it takes three years to get anything done around here and Concord, right? So I, I'd suggest you might, you know, make that a priority, and it seems like those are the town's priorities and the Select Board's priorities. If you want to be aligned with that, and I just feel like bringing up the combined business again and trying to rezone that. Which, you know, was kind of a. You know. A, a topic that, you know, there were a lot of opinions on, that I think that, you know, you should focus on what we have and, and sort of the big. Pieces of land or large acreage to actually, you know, get some housing and make a dent in it. And, you know, we have this land available and we need to do something with it. Versus just keep. You know, going back to Throw and combine business and, and trying to get that passed, I, I think the town really. You know, wants you or wants, you know, to absorb what we just, you know, voted for, the MBTA. So, you know, that's kind of my point, the parking issue, I know you guys are doing a parking study. And, you know, there's a lot of, you know, parking issues and. I, you know, have sent you, you know, three weeks in a row, but pretty much every week in the Concord Journal. That Middle Street and Academy Lane, you know, there's a bunch of overflow because you guys. You know, part of the problem is Concord Academy got parking relief of seventy-five parking spots, so. All those people flow into the adjacent neighborhoods because. You know, they want the parking, and then the businesses park in the adjacent neighborhoods. And then, you know, all the delivery trucks and the landscapers and everybody else, so. You know, I think you need to think long and hard about, you know, reducing the parking requirements. And giving parking relief to people, because it really does affect those. You know, neighborhoods that are adjacent to the downtown, so, you know, those are kind of the points I would like you to. Kind of consider when you look forward to your goals and objectives for the next couple of years.
Great, thank you very much. There any other public comments? If not. I think the goals memo is. Good to go, I don't know if we need to vote for that or anything, I think it's just us accepting that it is what it is and. We can obviously tweak it as we. Move on, as we discussed. So the next agenda item is the zoning parking requirements analysis next steps. And so I'll turn it over to Elizabeth, who can discuss what those next steps may or may not be.
So I sent the board the proposed scope of work from the. Consultant at TEC who's been assisted the board with the initial evaluation. Portion along with my. Suggested edit to the scope just to make it a little bit more refined and. So. This really is just turning it over to the board if you think that scope of work. Hits the mark or if there's, you know, something missing or. You want to kind of go in a different direction. So I, and I can, I can. I can bring it up if the board wishes.
I, I would like to see it up.
So I did send that revised. Scope to TEC and they were able to. Send an updated contract, I don't know if this is big enough for people.
There's a missing word and, but you know, I think we can live with it, it's clear enough what it says.
Oh, I see.
Where is that?
It should say relief from parking requirements. And parking dimensions, because it's three things, joint parking relief from and parking dimensions, but. People will understand.
So I, I think, you know, part of this is taking all of the, you know, information. That was gathered in the technical memos and going back and looking at the. You know, the joint parking facilities, I think the board had. After the site plan review for the redevelopment of Paparazzi kind of had a. A little, a little bit more information on how, you know, how that joint, you know, parking should work and. The type of information that the board should be asking for when you have that joint parking, so. Because I think if the board remembers for that project, they, they had something like twenty additional parking spaces and. They, they weren't basing the parking based on the joint parking and the highest. You know, peak period of parking need. They were just basing it on each of their tenants said, we want this amount of parking, so. I think that language and what. Information the board should be asking for when you have a mixed-use joint parking development. That the consultant can help draft, you know, draft that in a bylaw amendment. And then the same goes with the relief from parking requirements. I think there's a lot of different. Information out there that can be provided and. A lot more detailed information when somebody is requesting relief. Aside from that, I, what goes along with this project is much larger. Public education. Piece to this and. What, you know, the, the realities of, you know, parking, you know, especially in. You know, let's say like Concord Center, you know, where, you know, all of those uses, you know, all, most of those buildings don't have parking. And so to, to keep having it, you know, a vibrant. You know. Commercial, you know, center in Concord Center. As, you know, Wendy mentioned, you know, if. If one restaurant is there and, and something else wants to come in. A change of use, and everybody has to request, everybody has to request relief from parking it. You know, so I, I think there, there just needs to be, you know, a lot more education on, on that, the whole topic of parking. And for the board to be able to move forward with any type of amendment. And then lastly, you know, the transportation demand management pieces of it. I think the, you know, the board, you know, Planning Board, but also Board of Appeals. With the Novo Project saw an element of, you know, what TDM measures. There's a broad spectrum of, you know, types of TDM measures that can be now provided. By, you know, employers or. Residential developments, so I think having something that's more concrete. Makes the conversations. Go more smoothly.
Elizabeth, I do have one question on this, I'm looking over the scope and. I think, you know, with it being a hot button topic. I mean, six meetings may seem like a lot, but do we have access to have, get funds in the future if we need the TEC to be there for more than six meetings? Because I think. They're gonna be there for more than six meetings for something like this. You know, just.
But Rob, we might not need, need them for all the meetings.
I, oh, I know, I'm just saying, it's just, we're talking about ourselves here today, you know, so it's just more something, you know. Think of, think of the time and effort that, that Linda put into the MBTA, and I think this is just as equally as a hot topic, you know, going to be, that's all.
I, it would have to, it would have to come from some. I, I would have to look for other funding sources than what is currently. In the budget, so if, you know, if the board does want to move forward with this contract, I, I may have funds. In this year's budget, so to amend the contract and allocate those funds, which then, yes. For next fiscal year, I, I have, you know, twenty thousand dollars in the budget for transportation. Type things, so there, there would be funding.
Okay.
But it. It all depends. It all depends on where I, where I land right now with the Planning Division budget. Because we have a, a couple of other, from a planning perspective, you know, just. There are certain projects that. The Planning Division moves forward individually outside of what boards and committees do. And so it has taken me. Six years to slowly inch forward and get enough funds. Strung together to get. Four lights on Kai's Road, so between Concord Market and the parking lot, the town parking lot. There are no lights along that section of the road. Even though it is now with Concord Market and Walgreens and, you know, it's, it's heavily used, so. So that's, you know, if anybody cares, that's one, that's one project the Planning Division is finally moving forward with, so. So, yeah, I, I, I think so, and, and. And there's, there's other committees that, you know, updating the parking requirements in the bylaw, you know. We can cobble together, you know, some funds from this budget and some funds for that budget if we needed to.
Okay, that's, that's good.
I think I had. Maybe a follow-on question, and that's in terms of deliverables. So I know what Sam has provided in the past. And here I see, you know, this may include such exhibits and reference documents, et cetera, et cetera, but that's a far away from. A presentation. And I, so it seems to me, and I don't know that Sam is necessarily the best person to put together a presentation unlike. Lily or Whorsley and Witten, who were really excellent at that, but. It seems to me that this is then gonna rest heavy on. It seems to me that this is then gonna rest heavy on. Elizabeth and Mark maybe and and the you know, the whole planning board to come up with. Um, the educational outreach and presentation and. Documents to 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 um explain. Parking um and I that makes me a a little bit. Cautious again because that's something that um a consultant could do, but I don't see it in. This document, so I that I wanted to ask about.
Linda, don't you think if he gives us the data that we can put the presentation together in such a format, and I agree, a lot of it is about education. Okay, about people understanding why you need certain parking zoning requirements, okay? Because I'm not so sure everybody does. Everybody just thinks, oh, you can park any place or they shouldn't be parking there, okay? Um, and I think a big part of what I expect to happen through this project is as much education to the. Constituents as anything else, okay? And I intend to do it in conjunction with the Economic Vitality Committee. Um, I met with the West Concord folks. I need to meet with them again. I'm gonna meet with anybody that has a position in this. The biggest thing is gonna be, as Elizabeth said a little while ago, corralling it to zoning. Okay, and not just a broad based parking discussion because we don't have control over that, okay? We have control over the zoning. And I think I've said there's a few, I think, low hanging fruits that we can look at fairly quickly in terms of. Um zoning changes, okay? Um, I don't know if there's gonna be a lot more than just those few things that we can do, but at least we can dig into it and explain why. We do what we do, I guess. Okay, does that make sense? That's that's my plan anyway, okay?
Okay, and I'm also um so at the um. I'm hopeful that at the beginning of July, um the. Job posting for the transportation planner will be um issued. Uh, and I'm I'm putting the the good vibes out to the universe that come the fall. I'll I'll have somebody on board uh as well um who would be able to, you know, provide that bridge. Between the technical side and the community engagement side.
That would be excellent.
Also have a little bit more time, excuse me, as I mentioned to you yesterday, Linda, the select board has put off town meeting until June. Sometime, so we have a little bit more time to get our act together, I guess, we won't, you know, okay? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Elizabeth, I'm not sure if this can or should go in the scope or not, but the scope includes joint parking facilities, which if I understand correctly. Are um shared uses among uh businesses on the same property. But there is the perennial question of shared parking between. Separate properties, as an example, um Debras and formerly the Five and Ten, several other. Businesses right around there have an agreement among the multiple properties. That that little parking area behind their businesses can be used by anyone who shops in any of those businesses. It saves an awful lot of um people driving from one parking lot to another, running into pedestrians, making traffic and using up gas. Uh, and is a great thing for the town. It's very hard for business owners to set one of these things up to can negotiate with another property owner or another business owner. And I would hope that, speaking of what Wendy said about um uh cooperating with other committees, I would hope the Economic Vitality Committee could. Um, maybe put some effort into trying to negotiate this, but I wonder if there's any place for us to ask Sam. Does he have any advice on what to say in zoning or if this really does not belong in the scope of work for Sam at all?
I think it's it's in there, so it's it's part of the contract that's been written to talk about.
But I thought it only, but I thought joint was only um amongst businesses on the same property. No, it's also across properties. It's overall that I withdraw my comment. I'm delighted to hear it's already in there.
Um, yeah, it's it's just as off-street parking facilities for different buildings or uses. May be provided and used collectively or jointly.
Okay.
It doesn't specifically say on, you know, only on one property.
Great.
Elizabeth, is it um permitted in Concord um to use um services like Spot Hero? Could.
Well, Spot Hero pertains to private parking where they sign up to use Spot Hero, so in other words. You know, as I'm sure you've done, if you use Spot Hero in New York or Boston or someplace, it's parking lots that you can secure a spot with. But they're they're private lots, okay, as opposed to just driving up and saying, I want to park my car. You have a spot there, you pay in advance and it's generally less expensive. I use it in New York City all the time. I use it in Boston frequently, okay? Like, you know, we don't have any private parking places.
But we do, we do, like, the the Realtor on in in, you know, that has. Those like, I can't remember, was it eighteen spaces, um but they they don't make them available.
Oh, no, but 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 Spot Hero is for like pay lot that you reserve a spot in a paid, so they're guaranteeing you.
Not necessarily, it can be, I I've I've used Spot Hero um in Boston and I've gone up alleyways and I. Uh, you know, I uh I use a person's personal spot and pay, you know, and and pay.
Join that now, that is, that's new, you're right.
Yeah, and and um or um, you know, a bu- a business that's a bank. And they don't use their parking um on the bank parking lot at night and I've rented spaces there, so it's not. Um.
It's a good thought, Linda. I mean, you know, we'd have to approach people about that and say, okay, you know, here's a revenue opportunity for you if you want to take advantage of it. Okay, so.
Can we do that? I mean.
Why can't we?
Does it need to be allowed? I don't know.
Um, if it's private property, what would be the stop? We could run in a a column in the Concord Bridge saying, you residents of Concord, wanna earn some extra money and. Solve our parking problem?
Okay, okay.
Right there, um so no, a residential property owner cannot have a commercial parking um operation on their property.
Okay, alright.
Lots, um it depend, it's gonna depend on the uses that are assigned to that that. Um, building on that property, the amount of parking they're supposed to have. Um, when they're open, how many spaces they're required to have under zoning. Um, I I think if somebody, let's, you know, so let's take fifty-nine Walden. The, you know, if the real estate office ever goes in there, you know, and they, you know, close at five o'clock and they have. This parking lot, I don't, I don't see why, I I think because it is. A use of that par- property as a parking facility, there would have to be some type of permit process. For that, um and I think that's, you know, that's something that, you know, that can be looked at during this conversation. I don't see why not.
Right.
But you it but a, that is a commercial parking lot then, and that's a different use, so. And and so it would just have to be, you know, discussed as part of the zoning. Lot, yeah.
Yeah, well, I think that might be helpful in terms of.
Interesting thought, yeah, I mean.
Without, you know, the other half, it's the other half, you know, uh other half are just people. Who re- are um, you know, temporarily renting a a spot, yeah.
Okay, I made it up.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, I will um I will ask the question about the presentation um side of this. And um. And maybe tweak the develop deliverables a little bit and then have them at the end. And then um hopefully it, you know, we can get this through quickly.
Um, have a comment from the public from Carol Savoy.
Carol Savoy, sixty-one Bellknap Street. Um, I had a comment in regards to the parking. There was a study, I think, done with the seniors in town. And there was an article about it in the bridge a few weeks ago about what seniors want. And one of the subjects was they wanted easier parking or more parking. Um, they said that they would go into town more and shop more and frequent the restaurants and. You know, places of business more if they could find easier parking, so I don't know if there's any. Thing you can do in zoning to zone something like. Five spots downtown or near the library or something for senior parking only. Um, just to make it more convenient for them and that, you know, maybe that will, you know, increase business. Because they will be more likely to go into town if they can find a available spot.
I made a note of it, Phil.
Thank you for that. That is something we can look into, I guess. Um, I'm not. I I I always get question, I always question whether things like that are legal. I have no idea, but it's just a question.
Um, it is, oh, look into it.
Awesome, and um with that, we will move to the next thing, which is Planning Board Liaison Town Planner Updates. Um, this is probably a good moment to finalize some of our liaison. I know we have some missing that have been pending for a bit, so I just wanted to. Maybe if we can lock that down, Elizabeth, I don't know what we have unassigned for me.
Um, so I I briefly gave you an update on hopefully getting two planners on board. So that's exciting, um and then um right now, uh. Other projects we're working on, as I mentioned, um the Kai's Road Lights, but. Just saw an email that it may require that whole section of sidewalk to be reconstructed, which I don't have the money for that. Um, and then just slowly advancing um the asset at River Bridge. Um, updates for the planning board, I can tell you, um Bank of America has submitted a. Site plan application to uh redo their lighting um at the bank on Main Street. Um, so that actually needs site plan approval because they're adding um more than uh ten percent new lights. Um, so that's coming, um then also um. Middlesex School has submitted their application to the Board of Appeals for their new um field house. Uh, and um that will need a recommendation from the planning board, so um you'll be getting an email. I think we're just, we're loading up all the documents and plans so that the board can start uh taking a look at that. And um other applications. Um, oh, uh, today, a preliminary um two lot subdivision was submitted. Um, so the board will be seeing that, um probably your meeting in July. And that's all I can think of.
Where where's the two lot subdivision, Elizabeth?
Um, sixty-one B Walden Street, so um right almost to the end of Walden. Um, before you get to Route Two, it's a, it's a kind of like a flag, an oversized flag lot. On the right-hand side.
Any any update on um Novo?
Um, no, I I have not heard anything, I'm not, I'm probably going through the financing. Um, piece of things.
What about the one up at the Road Hills?
Um, haven't haven't heard from them either. I know that they're in the process of uh redesigning the project, but I haven't seen anything.
Okay, thanks, sorry, I was away. You want to hear about Hanscom Field?
Yeah, that'd be great.
The Northfield Project, the um. Public response ends June sixth, so everybody has written letters, you know. Questioning the validity of the whole project, um I got one today from. The National Park Service that was very well written, that questioned several aspects of the project. Um, and whether they were, you know, legally put forward based upon what they were trying to accomplish, so. You know, there's a lot of pushback on it, if you can appreciate, um nobody knows at this point where it's gonna end up. Um, I the I think Massport believes it will be done at some point, but in some sort of a negotiated fashion. But again, I don't think anybody knows, um you know, obviously lots of public sentiment against it. Um, so we'll have to wait and see, because a lot of hurdles that have to be overcome before it can go into a project, you know, the town of Bedford has to approve. The full plan, because most of the property is within their jurisdiction, what, you know, that's a ways away, so. We'll see what happens, that's all. I'll keep you informed, okay?
Thank you, um so one item that I know was out there was we have mini liaison assignments and. One question that that was brought up and we didn't want to assign anything to you. Um, because you've already managed to take on parking, but whether you wanted to continue to um be a part of this Hanscom discussions now that it's it's. Nearing me, I didn't know how invested you were in trying to to um see it out to the end this year.
But, well, I I'm on the Hanscom Field Advisory, so you know, I represent the town to that board, okay, so. Um, the trouble is the board meets oftentimes on Tuesday, which is a conflict with the planning board sometimes, but you know. I meet individually with the chairman, I'm gonna have coffee with him on Friday, you know, I try to stay abreast of it, okay, so. Um, it's it's no, it's no additional burden for me to keep you informed on it, okay?
Yeah, that was my, I just didn't wanna, I didn't want to start one.
I'm on the committee, so it doesn't matter.
Awesome, great.
And I'm assuming that that I am, I'm the Transportation Advisory Committee Liaison. It that's what we had talked about, um but I was hadn't been sworn in yet.
So I don't, Andrew, if you wanna, um so this is the current list that we have. I don't know if I, do I need to zoom in?
Uh, yeah, I can't, I can't read it, and I have my reading glasses on.
Now I zoom in on the email.
I think Rob is on the website as the tech person.
Yeah, so that was last, I think, last year, is that correct?
Yes, that was correct.
So we have um Community Preservation Committee um is Sue, Hanscom Field Advisory Committee, Mark. Um, I think Abby said that if nobody else wanted it, she would be the housing groups liaison, um and that's the. Um, you know, they usually have their quarterly housing roundtables. The Concord Housing Authority, Concord Housing Development Corporation, Concord Housing Foundation, the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And the Regional Housing Services Office, um there's the Climate Action Committee. Um, and which that is another board that conflicts with planning board meetings, so I'm not. If somebody wants to be the liaison and then, you know, as Mark mentioned, when there's. Meeting conflicts, you know, just to at least periodically meet with the chair of that committee. Or the Sustainability Director and kind of get an update. Um, Pat um volunteered for Transportation Advisory Committee because they meet at nine thirty in the mornings. Uh, Andrew is the liaison for the Select Board, um currently, um. There was no liaison for the West Concord Advisory Committee. Um, Linda said she would do Economic Vitality Committee, but I think that was before she got appointed to. The M C I Concord Advisory Board. Um, and then there's the two-two-two-nine Main Street Advisory Task Force. And then there's the Minuteman Advisory Group on Interlocal Coordination, which is the subregion. Um, for um Magic, uh that Concord is one of the um communities in that subregion. Uh, I'm sorry, what was that, Rob?
The West Concord Advisory Committee.
I'm happy to um, keep on with um, Economic Vitality.
I can pick up the two-two-two-nine.
And I can do magic.
I think that's. I think that's everybody, right? Everybody has one. One, two, three. Yeah. Um, okay, and I um, I will let the Sustainability Director know. Um, you know, that. Um, he can, he and I can just, you know, keep. Uh, touching base on things, and if he needs somebody from the planning board, you know, we'll, we'll throw out. An email and um, maybe just whoever is available for that meeting, or if it's a a different night. You guys kind of can rotate.
Elizabeth, how does this work at this point, then? Will I start to get notices of meetings of from the committees? Do you finesse that? Do I need to do anything?
Um, the the easiest way, so um, you know, ha- neither Heather or I need to try and. Add a some, another thing to our brain, um, is to go um, onto the website under notify me. And um, just sign up to get their agendas.
Okay.
But we we, um, Heather and I will let um, each of those committee. Chair know um, who their select, their planning board liaison is, um, so if they send something out. So Community Preservation Committee, Transportation Advisory Committee, West Concord Advisory Committee. Um, those are all um, staffed by planning, so you know, we'll, we'll make sure that. Keep people informed, um, and then I will let the others know.
Great. And I think that brings us to meeting minutes.
But I um, I don't think Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think um, any were um, finished and set, so.
Yeah, I didn't see any circulated, so I just, I wasn't. So I guess with that, that is um, the end of our agenda. If um, nobody has any other business, I will close the meeting. All right, the meeting is now closed. Thank you all, and have a good day.
Good night.